Village Board meeting into session. It's August 12th, 2013. This is number 3,057. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Great. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up here is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from?
So moved.
July 22nd. Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim, yes. Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss? Jane?
Very good. Motion carries. Next, we have public commentary. Would anyone like at this time to make a public comment to the board? Any hands? No? Nobody? Okay. We'll close the floor for public commentary and move on to presentations and awards. Mr. Tome is here with a presentation on the GIS program. Mr. Libado, if you want to.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom is here tonight to give us, kind of, the board a brief presentation of when we talk about GIS, what does that really mean and what is that doing for us? If you recall, the board first, we joined the consortium in last fiscal year, was our first year. I believe there are 23 communities.
Twenty-three communities.
Twenty-three communities that are part of this consortium. So we've been using that. There's what we call an employee side of it, and then there's a public side of this software stuff. And there's a lot to it, and we're just getting our feet wet with it. But one thing I would add is I handed everybody our five-year GIS capital plan or project list. I put it in front of everybody's chair tonight. And so you can take a look at that and what we've been working on. We can talk about that after the presentation. But we wanted, just like I said, to have an opportunity to show the board, you know, what we're paying for and how that's helping us out in making better decisions moving forward. So with that, I think may I turn over to you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks for having me. That was about a year ago, when I was last here. So a lot has happened over that time, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about some of those accomplishments. I am the owner of a company called Municipal GIS Partners. We are a company that was formed specifically to help create and support the GIS consortium. We have a staff of 23 professionals completely dedicated to the consortium and local government GIS. And we've been in business since 1998. As John mentioned, Mundeline joined a group of communities that are working together to make GIS not only possible but more affordable and more functional by collaborating. Collaborating from the standpoint of sharing costs, collaborating from the standpoint of sharing intellectual property, and collaborating from the standpoint of communication and ability to work with other communities to understand what they've done with technology, particularly in the GIS realm, to be successful with their program. We've been at this 15 years this coming October. And the thing that we are most proud of in the consortium and certainly at MGP is that over that long history, we have never lost a member. Adam had asked me to put together a list of things that have been going on. The list was very long, but we tried to trim it down to a couple of things. When we implemented GIS, we always think of two portions of it. The building of it, the building of the applications and the data, and then the using of it, which ultimately is the value that you guys get out of these programs. So in terms of the data, we've centralized your address databases from multiple sources. We've updated utility information into a centralized database system so that it's shared across the community user base. We've included the base mapping accuracy by adding areas of the village that were missing from your manual maps. And we've added a number of different taxing districts and service districts. And I'll demonstrate those in a little bit. In terms of utilization of the system from a desktop perspective, we performed a response time analysis, a five-minute response time analysis for your fire departments, not just from your departments, but actually your mutual aid, local surrounding communities as well. Water sampling station map, new planting map for future tree planting, metro bike routes that went through the league for publication in their documents, sewer backup incident mapping, as that's occurring, and snow removal map, which is in this particular swatch of a map. It's showing what routes are actually contracted out for work by other vendors. Now, from a technology point of view, what's important from the consortium perspective is we try to make sure that what we're giving your users and the residents as well is the tools that best match their needs. So we don't want to overspend on technology. So what we try to do is to align functional ability with the users' needs. And the product that I'm going to be showing tonight is a product called Map Office. And I'll be accessing this over the web. Now, there's two versions of Map Office. There's one that's on your public website, which allows residents to do basic information querying, such as zooming in. You'll see as I get closer here, building footprints will appear. And as I get closer, you begin to see addresses. So the typical resident or local developer would use this tool to simply select a parcel. Let me try that again. And what it's doing right now is drilling down through the hundreds of layers that have been created in your GIS system to bring back a lot of textual information from those underlying data sources. So in this case, what the county is, the address, accessory information, service information. And we actually also link this to the county site so that your staff, when they're using this, can quickly go to Lake County's site and glean whatever county information they'd like from that site as well. Another common use of this application is to actually compare different adjacent community, or parcels, by again selecting on the map. And what I can do then, excuse me, is to select as many parcels as I like for my analysis. In this case, I'll do two, and then I'll complete that selection. Excuse me, I'm sorry. It'll bring back some of the information about that parcel, and then I can aggregate those values if I want for numeric values. Typical residents also have the ability to do measure area, measure distance, and basic GIS functionality. Now, when we talk about internal to your staff, inside your network, the product is called Map Office Advanced. And it's the basic, same basic framework, but the functionality is advanced. So what I can now do is now see utility model. Might be a little bit tough to see. What I've brought up there is the water utilities, sanitary lines, and storm. And I can actually click on these features as well, because it's not just a picture. It's a database that allows me to attach common attributes to that system. Those attributes come from your as-built process or from utility plating. And now you can model your entire community dataset. Okay? Turn these off. We also have an overlay functionality, and this is in the public version as well, that allows us to overlay information on top of the base mapping. In this case, it's actually a zoning map. What you're going to see is a zoning polygon information come up for the village. Obviously, very useful for developers in the area, as well as residents when they want to know what ordinances might be affecting their property. Okay? So there's dozens of tools here. I'm not going to demonstrate all of these, but hopefully you get a sense of the amount of data that is coming from multiple different departments into a centralized data system that is then brought back through a mapping interface that allows not only your residents, but your staff to get this information efficiently. Back to the slideshow. As part of being, as part of a member of the consortium, we have a consortium portal called the GISconsortium.org website, which is mostly open to the public. There are certain areas that you can't get to that require a login for your staff. But one of the most useful things that I think is out there is this bulletin area, which allows your staff to literally see hundreds of different examples of how GIS is being used across the 23 members in the GIS consortium. And Adam had me pull out these two example projects. The one is from the village of Lincolnshire. What they're doing is updating their available sites list on a monthly basis. That's then available to the public, and they can drive people looking for commercial sites, retail, commercial sites to that area and be able to see where that relates to their geography. And then in the village of Glenview, what they do is they ask the county periodically for delinquent tax parcels. And they do this for a couple of reasons. One is first identify if any of their parcels are delinquent, and they certainly want to correct that. But what they're looking for is delinquent properties that are actually adjacent to village-owned properties, because they think that might be an opportunity which they can acquire that property if it's gone into delinquency. But there's literally hundreds of these kinds of projects on this consortium portal. And if you're interested in other ways that GIS is being used across the consortium, I think it's a great, it's a great resource. At the consortium level, Adam actually serves as a board member at the consortium level. And what the consortium is trying to do, in addition to your five-year plan, which is specific for your community, is to drive technology that's common across the GIS consortium. So what this is, is our technology roadmap for the next couple of years. I won't go through all this. Probably the two things I think are most interesting are this community portal, which is going to be a way to bring information not only from your GIS system but from other systems that you might have in the community, and to put this out on a website for people to access, as well as the move we're making to the mobile or field unit type of user. We understand that and predict that in years to come, everyone's going to be automated with some type of mobile technology. And what we're trying to do is build applications for that today. Okay? I just realized, too, I missed something I wanted to demo. Because the business intelligence component of Map Office is one of the more sophisticated pieces that we've implemented. And we've not done that here yet, although we have a couple planned for next year. But I'm going to go over to Highland Park. And what I can do is these two connections are actually connected to their internal ERP system for select types of information that they want to make available to their staff. The first one is permitting. So they have a web service for pending permits for this calendar year. So when I click that, it's actually pinging that system and bringing back the locations of those pending permits. And then on the police side, and again, just as a reminder, this is internal to the local area network. It's not for public consumption. But here are all the burglaries that occurred in Highland Park last year. Well, okay. Be careful with that information. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I've got a couple of questions. And for full disclosure, I, I, I'm in the industry that deals with the public record data and how it's layered. Are you envisioning layering this with Google Maps from a satellite perspective or from a street map perspective where staff could click on a property and actually get the street view of the property from when the Google truck was out here? Is that a licensing option that's available?
I wish I would have kept my application up. Maybe it saved my session. We do have a tool for that currently. The answer, the short answer is yes, and it's there now. I didn't demo it, so I didn't anticipate that question.
You just tell me that it's.
Yes. Yes, we do it now. And it's interesting, because we did it for a couple of reasons. We did it certainly because the information's free, right? We like free stuff. But it really is useful for our GIS specialists, because it allows them to see infrastructure that they otherwise may not be able to see. So I've got it up now. Let me just see if I can zoom in quickly and.
You should just be able to flip the satellite view, right?
Right. What we do here, we actually create something called a combination view, because there's a couple of these sources out there. So if I click on a spot, here's your base mapping, which is, by the way, the most accurate base map, because it's developed using Lake County map accuracy standards. The stuff from Google is created by Navtech, and the accuracy is, you know, pretty good but sometimes unpredictable. But here's your street view from Google, and here's the Bing perspective view meshed up with this. So I can actually then navigate down the street. And again, what our specialists and your staff find this useful for is they can see infrastructure or even painting on the street that you would have to otherwise go out and visit.
I got another question. You, in the handout John provided, he's talking about in 2016, we'll have Parkway trees identified. We may not have too many Parkway trees left by then. Wouldn't it be better to move that up closer as we do a tree inventory, John or Adam, knowing what's out there? I mean, is it not a critical piece of information that we need sooner?
Well, it's, the short answer is no. One of the things, if you flip to the back page of the information that I handed out, you'll see a simple table that just identifies one, two, three, and four. And we went through an internal process where all the departments had put together their list of projects that were a priority. And so this matrix that you see here is really quite simple. If it was easier and it took less time, 40 hours or less, if it benefited more than three departments, then you ended up in quadrant one. The more difficult it became and the fewer departments that it benefited, the lower ranking it got. And so we balanced that out with all the departments. And so the tree inventory ended up in number three. Wasn't last, but it was in quadrant three. And this will be a process that we go through every year to balance out the priorities of the organization and not just one department. One would argue, public safety is the most important always. And so under that type of reasoning, no other department would benefit from the technology that you see here tonight. So we've looked at this a lot of different ways, and there's a big spreadsheet behind the data that you have that came up with this, kind of the way we organized it and prioritized it for ourselves and others. So.
I think this is great. Come a long way from having the big giant plat books in the building department, having to rely on all the time. Amazing. Good stuff.
Well, and one of the things, if I could add just one more thing to that, what I find most important about this is there was, years ago, we, each department was creating its own silos of data. And that creates, in the long run, some inefficiencies and duplication of work. The quickest example is there was, I think, zoning maps that were being maintained by three different. And so when you changed one baseline data, I had to change it in three other locations or two other locations. And so if you forgot to change one, then pretty soon you got both these databases out that are different. And so that creates, it's not efficient. It's a waste of staff time. And by developing this type of system, we can begin to have a centralized database that makes us operate more efficiently and gives us better information at our fingertips to help us make better management decisions.
And then, John, you'll have the ability to use this internally as far as getting homeownership information if it comes to everything from grass is too long or knowing who the lender is by tapping into public record, finding the lender, who we have to contact, if it's foreclosure or if we're pursuing land acquisition, anything like that.
Right. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very impressive. Thank you very much. All right. This takes us to our public hearings. There are no public hearings. What we're going to do now, though, is adjourn and go to a Liquor Control Commission meeting where we'll address Tavern on 60 at 3:30 Town Line Road. So I need a motion to adjourn the village board meeting. Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss? Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'd like to call to order the Liquor Control Commission, August 12th. Clerk, please call the, no, yeah. I don't need a motion to open the meeting. Right? Yeah. I need a motion to start the meeting. Okay. I need a motion to begin the meeting of the Liquor Control Commission.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Meyer. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss? Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Now the Liquor Control Commission meeting is in session. We need to take the attendance now.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Very good. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from June 10th. Exhibit one in the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Present.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, exhibit two, we have what's on the business for tonight, which is Tavern on 60. Are the folks here that want to present? Very good. Just go to the mic, and if you could, just give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Phil Gelardi. I live at 1051 Evergreen Street in Mundeline. Right, I walked there. Right there.
David Patterson, 401 King Avenue in East Dundee.
Okay. And go ahead and.
We are requesting permission to apply for a liquor license at what currently is Blue 60. We would be changing the name to Tavern on 60. We'd like to make a nice, quality, upscale sandwich, pizza, you know, place for, a nice place for the town for everyone to come. I own a restaurant, Philly G's, used to be Gelardi's, in Vernon Hills. We've been there since '85. I was annexed into the town of Vernon Hills in 1995. I'm on 19 years with the village. We have never had one liquor violation in all the years we've been there. I know some of the board members. We've done rooms. John has seen me at Street Scenes, at Carmel when they do that. Dave also owns a bar, a restaurant in North Hoffman Estates. He also owns the valet company that we use that goes all over the county. He could tell you that a little.
Yeah. Local business owner as well.
Okay.
In Hoffman Estates, little sports bar there, and then a valet company that's been, I've operated for 22 years, 22 years now.
Okay. Any of the trustees have a comment, question?
I've got a question. Now, you own other restaurants and establishments. How much of your time and energy are you going to physically put in this location? Because if you haven't heard the history of this location, we've had some issues over the years.
Two, two big things. One, Phil, his establishment is right down the street from, the owner of the property lives in Wisconsin, so.
We know, we're aware of who the owner is.
I mean, absentee is an understatement. And anybody who's been to Philly G's has seen Phil there. Anybody who's been to my place has seen me there. And it's the beauty of our partnership here is that we feel to share the responsibility.
So we're going to see you here, too?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. It is exactly halfway home from my restaurant to my house. I am bringing some key people with me from my place that have worked for me for 10 to 15 years that I want in there, that I trust, and they know what they're doing. You're going to see me there. I mean, I'm not going to lie to you, I have two places. I have to watch both places, but there's no reason why I'm not going to be going back and forth constantly, every day.
Another question. Do you, do you own your other locations or are you leasing there as well?
I own my restaurant.
So is that your goal? I mean, assuming everything goes successfully here.
Down the road, yes it is.
Your goal would be to own this place and not be leasing from.
Correct.
Fantastic.
So first, I just have to disclose that, I don't know, Phil, I've known you for.
Quite a while.
Okay. Long time. Long time. His wife is an old family friend of mine. But, either as it may, you guys are requesting gaming.
Correct.
Video gaming. Fairly near to your door, this area. How is it, I mean, isn't the requirement for video gaming that it has to be in an area that's restricted for 21 and older and is closed off?
We.
You go ahead with that.
We have it at my location now in Hoffman Estates. And the state's biggest concern was visibility. They want to make sure that an employee inside the establishment can see the area where the gaming is very easily. And we, without getting too far into what the, where we were going to have it, we picked a spot that was close to the front door by the hostess and close to the bartender so that the visibility would be really, really good right there. Obviously, that could change if, upon inspection from you guys and from the state, if they didn't feel comfortable with it being there. But visibility was a big, was a big issue from the state. So.
So like where you have it, that was just sort of an open space. Are you going to like half wall it or are you going to?
We have right now, and the state approved it with stanchions that are just block off the area. And there's a sign that states you must be 21 years or older to enter this area. And we just have it blocked off with stanchions.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no objection. I, I welcome individuals who have a good record of running a quality establishment that will be representative of the type of businesses that we know in Mundeline. So I welcome these gentlemen to run this and get this thing on what it should be and should have been long ago.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay. You know, now, just, you said you were going to bring in someone to manage, someone you trust from 15 years. Is that what you're going to, you're going to?
My, my staff that's currently at Philly G's, it's really unique if you, if you looked at a lot of other restaurants. I have, 80% of my staff has worked for me for 12 years plus. That is very uncommon with restaurants, that typically have a lot of turnover. We are a family there. We've been together for a long time. And I, again, I do have two places. And there's, you know, eyes that I trust that if I'm not there for an hour, because I have to run to the other place that I want there. One is, you know, a girl that actually opened Gelardi's years ago, 24, 25 years ago. Left for a while and then came back. And another is a bartender of mine that locks up and closes and counts my drawers and watches my place when I go home now.
So you're not going to be hiring someone to manage this that you don't, outside?
Outside, no. Nobody I don't know.
That's great.
No, as far as anyone that's really going to be my eyes if I'm not there, it's somebody that would be currently working for me.
Okay. Well, you know, given the history of that location.
No, I understand. Like I said, I've lived in Mundeline for 17 years. I know the problems you've had here. The place is a nice place. It's been very, very poorly run. You know, I don't think there's anything wrong with that location. It's a nice building. It's a good spot. You've had out-of-state owners, you know, and you've had people that weren't there. That's, that's not going to happen with us.
Okay. Well, hearing that there's going to be experienced management that you can trust, that's music to the ears of the board here.
Sure.
I'll tell you that. So I don't have anything else? If anyone else doesn't, we have a little set of instructions here to get the ball rolling. So Mr. Patterson, Mr. Darley, Gelardi, thank you for coming in. Really appreciate it. There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Okay. Questions and comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Voss to adjourn, second by Kim. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to start the village board meeting again? Now, we need a motion to start the village board meeting again?
No move.
Motion by Voss, second by...
It was actually with Kim.
Motion by Kim, second by...
Second.
Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Great. The village board is now in session. Clerk, please call attendance.
Abernathy?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Temple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Very good. That takes us to the mayor's report in our agenda. This is exhibit two. And I think before we got into the... Really, there's a recommendation for a motion, but we really want to hear from Scott Springer here. Scott, you're here. You're going to present for us? Okay. Come on up. Thank you. You just... No.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for a few minutes. We're going to spend, I think, about 10 minutes today to primarily give some context to the letter that you have in front of you. But before I go on, I just want to introduce the key members of my team that are here. They're going to be helping me with the presentation. I have Sean Temple, Mike Mallon, and Steve Clough. What we want to do is talk a little bit about kind of a high-level overview of some of the key redevelopment agreement terms related to development rights that Weston has with the village of Mundaline. Then, we want to talk a little bit about our role in identifying and securing end users for village-owned property where we don't have development rights. I'm a context guy, and we're hoping that this kind of gives you context to the letter. And we want to also give you a current assessment of the commercial real estate market in terms of what we're trying to do to attract end users to the downtown Mundaline. And then talk about a few next steps and wrap it up. So, very quickly, on the key redevelopment terms. Everybody is kind of familiar with this diagram, because we see it all the time. This diagram is taken from the master plan prepared by the foreign associates. And we used this plan when we were negotiating redevelopment in Mundaline. By what parcels Weston would have some people that developed development in those that we wouldn't. Well, this diagram shows the parcel to the village hall. And these green tags, this green tags side is what in a redevelopment agreement is called the exclusive lot. And this purple match parcel is that parcel that in the redevelopment agreement is called the Weston lot. So, for the Weston lot, for each one of these lots, there are long lists of requirements that Weston has to meet to actually secure those development rights. And Mayor Lentz, Justin Voss, Justin Sullivan basically were in that mix in terms of what, you know, what threshold does Weston have to reach in order to get development rights for each of these lots? And they're very different between the exclusive lot and the Weston lot. For example, the Weston lot, we have development rights on that for the term of our lease, the lease that we're going to have on the second floor of the village hall and the first option. So, that's basically a term of 10 years that we have development rights on that parcel. But, there are a number of things that we have to do. This is true of the project. And the first thing is to satisfy Pete and completion of the village hall and, of course, the village of Mundaline. But that is... That's very, very important, that we do that job correctly. And we're doing our best to do that. That's just one of a number of things that we need to do. On the exclusive lot... Excuse me. We have a certain period of time to find an end user for that exclusive lot. And then, once we do, we have to essentially purchase that lot for market rates. And there are a number of milestones that we have to reach after we purchase it, like how long does it take to construct it? How long does it take to occupy that building? And if we reach those milestones, the village credits Weston for that initial purchase. So, again, it's a measured approach based on milestones, performance milestones that Weston has to achieve. Now, that's great. And we're going to do that. But what's going to... What's happening with these lots? These are the develop... Those are the parcels where Weston does not have any redevelopment right. But, in discussions with the village, like officials, staff, there's no way we're going to be marketing these sites without marketing the whole downtown. We have to market the whole downtown, because that is what's going to make this whole development successful. So, that is why we're asking for a letter tonight, basically saying Weston can go out and try to attract end users with no guarantee of what Weston gets in return. We're doing that at our risk, but we're the folks on the other end of the telephone, picking up the line and saying, with Victor's help, of course, saying, "Come to Mundaline. Downtown Mundaline is the place that you want to be." And figuring out where is the best place for it, irrespective, really, of whether or not we have development rights on that parcel or not. So, that's really... That's really where we are right now in terms of trying to find end users. And we thought it'd be a great idea for Sean and Mike to talk a little bit about the market right now. Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees and distinguished staff.
Can you give your name and address for the clerk?
Sean Temple, 521 South 10th Avenue, La Grange, Illinois.
How do you spell Sean?
S-H-A-W-N.
S-H-A-W-N.
Thank you for your time this evening. We're excited to give you an update on where we are on the project. As some of us know, it took quite some time. It's great to see the steel up. It's great to see the roads up. It's great to do a site visit with interested parties that want to be there and doing their due diligence. So, as part of that, we're using all our networks and relationships to look at all asset classes that could be on that site, from office to medical office, to retail, residential, and restaurant. And we've engaged with the local brokers, and we've... The office market, suburban office market, to be frank, is still difficult for new construction. We've talked to a lot of folks. We're looking for the right users that might be local or regional or looking to expand and still want to be in downtown or be close to the metro station and stuff. So, the cost to build a new construction office building and what the rents now currently, there's a big gap in that market still. But we do have a lot of interest from medical office developers, because that market's going so well because of consolidation and what's happening in the medical field. So, we have several of those developers out, working with their hospital clients and tenants and everything else. So, we think we've got good momentum on that. We... What we've done, we've also started to engage in interviewing with office brokers that specialize in these type of developments and get their feedback. And we look forward to engaging one of those in their term to help really bore in and zone in on that specific use at that site. And as part of that strategy, Scott and our team and the staff thought it would be good to engage Mike Mallon, who was part of the original foreign associate team, that's the retail expert and broker, to start taking the retail portion to the market. And what I'm going to have him do is come up and give his latest report on the retail market. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mike Mallon. That's M-A-L-L-O-N. And I'm the managing director of DK Mallon. And as Sean mentioned, I'm back. I was here before when we were involved with preparing the plan with foreign associates. And I'm thrilled to be standing here in front of you this evening, because as I think I probably said during that part of the process, I'm really not a consultant. Really, what I am is a problem solver. And I think that there clearly is an opportunity here to create something, create a sense of place that will hopefully benefit to the community for years to come. And so, the fact is, I get to stick around and continue to help with that. Really, it's something that I'm very, very excited about. Besides being back, what I wanted to do here real quickly this evening to let you know that retail is back. And, you know, it's amazing how things have changed over the last three years, four years. Retail, like all other retail, real estate sectors, clearly had kind of bottomed out. And I'm happy to say that really throughout the Chicago end market, occupancy levels are now up, asking rents are up, and most importantly, retailers are growing. And that's awful exciting. So, one of the things that we've done over the last four months, since we've been engaged by Weston Solutions, is really to kind of do an overall market analysis for really the project in the downtown area, to kind of see really who's not here, who should be here. And that then becomes our target list of retailers that we're going after. And one of the ways that we go after them is we're very active in a number of organizations. One of those organizations is International Council Shopping Centers. And just recently, we went ahead and put on an event last week that was at the Height Regency McCormick Place. And this, and I can certainly provide you with a copy of this if you'd like. This is the Retail Connection Directory. And what this does is for this event, and we had about 440 people that attended the event, everybody from municipalities to brokers, to developers, to most importantly, retailers. We had over 140 retailers that attended the event to tell us what they were doing and how they were growing. It's the highest number of retailers we've had in about five years. So, in the book here, this kind of serves as a guideline for us. It explains who's active, where they want to locate, how do you contact them, what's the right demographic mix, what stores are opening in 2013 as well as in 2014. So, again, this helps serve for us as a little bit of a map, a roadmap, in terms of how do we put our project together. So, we've just really begun in terms of our marketing. And hopefully, as we continue to interact with your staff and with the board, we'll have a chance to share with you more in terms of the progress that we're going to have on the retail front. As we talked about during the planning process, a lot of our retail focus is going to be on food. It's going to be on service, and it's going to be on convenience. And if you look in the book, you'll see a lot of those folks are active right now in the marketplace. Thank you. So, going forward, we're going to be, while being in the market, with Mike and our office broker and Sean. And we're going to be securing additional appropriate development in downtown Mundaline. Of course, working with staff every step of the way. And I think that if you ask John and Pete and Victor and others, I think they will attest to the point, to the fact that we are totally engaged in terms of communication, what we're doing, when we're doing it, why we want to do it. We have robust debate about some things, which is really, really healthy. So, we're going to be doing that. We're going to task our team to interface with Victor on the branding initiative, because what we want to make sure is that the message that we're giving the market in terms of being in downtown Mundaline is the same message that the village wants, okay? That Victor and staff and the elected officials are going to decide what is the message of downtown Mundaline. That's very important. And continue, you know, our routine updates to staff and the village board. The last thing I want to say is just a word about the health of our partnership. I think the health of our partnership is, continues to be outstanding. And we really, really appreciate the continued opportunities that the village is giving Weston to prove our stuff and to make Mundaline a better place to live. So, thank you so much. Any questions?
Thanks a lot. Any questions from the trustees? I'll just... You want a copy of the book?
Got one request for a copy of the book. Did you want to say something?
No, I just, just for clarification, there's no motion on the agenda, but the supplement is a request for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this letter that Mr. Springer made mention of.
Yes, Trusty Sullivan?
I may ask a question. Good evening, Mr. Springer. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
We have always, in negotiating and discussing between Weston and the village of Mundaline, always understood and hoped that Weston would be part of the process of developing not only the lots in this particular section, this village square, but throughout the TIF area. The agreement that we've entered into is one that, nothing new. We've always envisioned Weston helping us and being authorized to help us find users. But it also states that there's no agency or brokerage arrangement. But how do you envision connecting with the brokerage industry? Mr. Mallon is part of the Weston agreement and part of that authorization, but there must be some connection with the brokerage industry and agencies in that regard to help Weston and the village find users for these spaces?
Yes, Trusty Sullivan. This is a unique situation, inasmuch as Weston does not own the land, okay? So, the agreement that Weston has with DK Mallon is a contract, okay? And that contract is with Weston to help us identify end users. So, that is the nature of our agreement with DK Mallon and the type of arrangement that we would have, let's say, with an office broker. It's not a traditional brokerage agreement. Because Weston is... Weston, we're not a broker. We're not a real estate broker. We're a developer, but we're not a broker. So, there are very, very clear legal lines that we are following in terms of we're engaging Mike to help us identify end users and bring businesses to the village.
So, in... Mr. Mallon's company finds someone that possibly... That type of arrangement between a buyer and the village would involve some type of brokerage or agency expense?
The... That's right. It may. It ultimately may make sense for that to happen. You know, this is kind of like always, we're breaking new ground here, like we did before. And so, what we're going to try to do is secure the end users. Let's secure the end user first.
Right.
I know, based on our history, that we'll be able to figure out an equitable arrangement for all parties.
Okay. Thank you. No?
So, then, Mr. Mayor, so I mean, it doesn't prevent anybody from coming to the village direct and making deals with us?
No. No. I mean, someone could approach us and freely talk to them. Absolutely. Any others? No? I think it's great to, you know, thank you for coming up and talking. And it's always great, in moments like this, without a deal on the table, to just revisit the whole thing and talk about it and get to know each other, because we know in the future, we're going to see quite a bit of each other, I think.
Yes, we will. Yes. Yes, we will, yes.
You know, with, with something else going on, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proposed letter.
Second.
A motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. That brings us to Item B, Exhibit Three in your packets. This is the Commission Board Appointments. There's two names here. We'll take one at a time. And let's click here. Let's take Maria Sanchez first, from the Human Relations Commission. I need a motion to approv... Yeah, I need a motion to approve the mayor's commission appointment of Maria Sanchez to the Human Relations Commission. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Voss. Okay.
No. Didn't know you had a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, this is for Maria Sanchez. This is a motion by Semple, second by Voss, to approve her to the Human Relations Commission. This is a reappointment. Okay? Any discussion? Okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment.
Yes.
I want to thank, if Maria Sanchez, is she here tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to thank her for her continued service. She's been on there for quite a while, it looks like. I also appreciate that, I really enjoy when all of our, all of Mundeline comes out to help, and she represents about, you know, a 30 percent population is Latino here. So, I really appreciate that she's coming out to be the voice of Mundeline as well. I also wanted to point out the non-reappointment of Jennifer Kerr, and, but I wanted to also express appreciation for her service and for her good attendance, as well as picking up a shovel. So, I just wanted to thank her for that as well.
Very good. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Next, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have a new appointment of Carrie Garache. Need a motion to approve her? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Abernathy. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions. I want to know how many applications total were submitted for planning and zoning?
I think there were three.
Okay. And of those three, and I would just like to, you know, full disclosure, point out that she was on your slate when you guys were running. And there are those people out there who will mention things about corrupt governments and Illinois being a state that's known for that. And we definitely don't want that here in Mundeline. So, would you mind going through a little bit of the process and clarifying how you chose Mrs. Garache?
Well, there were two openings. There were three applicants. And when you look at the resumes, I took those two that had the finest credentials, and I interviewed them, and they were clearly qualified. And she was one of them to fill one of those spots. So, here she is.
Yes. Thank you. We just need to, or I personally love government transparency, and it's not a bad thing to start.
You know, we always love applicants for these commissions. We'd like to see people, it's on the web, you can get the applications right there, just submit that with your resume, that would be great. And I think we also do a pretty good job of keeping track of announcing which openings we have at any given time. So, that's something that's open on the web and is clearly available.
Mayor?
Trustee Voss.
I just want to add, Plan Commission is a really important commission. And unlike some other commissions where residency or business ownership in Mundeline automatically qualifies you to be on them, Plan Commissioners have to be held to a higher level of knowledge and expertise, in my view. Not the least of which is because if they misconduct themselves at a Plan Commission hearing, the village is legally going to have a hard time. Unlike someone maybe in Mundeline Community Days, if they, our Community Days Commission does a great job, a hard-working job, but if in their meeting, they misspoke or used some word inappropriately, it's not going to result in a lawsuit versus the Plan Commission. So, I appreciate the mayor's desire to make sure that people that we are appointing to the Plan Commission have some municipal background, some planning background, some architecture background, some background that makes them a bit more qualified to be on this commission.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Mrs. Garache, are you here? Here we go. Want to come on up and...
All the way up.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Carrie Garache...
I, Carrie Garache...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner...
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner...
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got to sign. Oh, sign that. There you go.
You didn't say Mrs. Garache was left-handed.
All right, do? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on, we have the Statute Planning Committee Appointments. This is Exhibit Four. Click that. This is going to be a motion to appoint the above-listed individuals to the Mundeline Statute Planning Committee. All right. Sue Forshe, Jim Nutchnig, Don Hanson, Tom...
Wimit.
Wimit, Holly Kim, and Marilyn Sindels. So, this is just, we don't need to swear them in or anything, right? This is just a motion to appoint them...
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Am I allowed to vote if I'm in it?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Where was that? Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Is that everybody?
Okay. Are any of those folks here? We got Mr. Nutchnig in the back, Jack's here, Sue here, Sue's there, Don Hanson. Is Tom Wimit here? No?
No, he's not.
Okay.
And I think Marilyn may be still in Michigan.
Marilyn's still in Michigan. All right, well... Well, listen, on behalf of all of us, we're really thankful that you're, you know, embarking on this effort, and it's great, so...
I'm very thankful for your support of everyone. To be honest with you, I'm really surprised at the support. I didn't think I'd get as much of it, ma'am. I'm really glad. John's been a big help, everyone's been a big help. I can't begin to say thank you. And what a great asset this is going to be to the Village of Mundeline. I think it's going to bring in people who want to invest in this town, like nine million people going up and down that street every year. It's got to help us, it just does. And we need public art to dispel...
There you go. That's great.
Thank you.
Appreciate your passion. It's what it's going to take to get that money in, right? I mean, good luck to you all, very much, and thank you. Branding Committee Appointments, Exhibit Five. I mean, for landing on my report, this is a motion, I need a motion to approve appointments of Trustee Sullivan and Trustee Kim to the Branding Steering Committee.
So moved.
Want to try that again?
You know, should we make that part of the motion? Put the alternate, okay? We were going to make you an alternate. You okay with that? All right. Then, we're going to need a motion to approve the appointments of Trustee Sullivan and Trustee Kim, with Trustee Abernathy being the alternate to the Branding Steering Committee.
Phil, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Voss.
In accordance with Trustee Kim's desire to have our things be more transparent, do you want to say how you came up with Trustee Kim and Trustee Sullivan being appointed to this? Please.
I just, well... Well, Trustee Kim is an obvious choice because she's the chairman of the Marketing Committee, Marketing and Communication Committee. I asked Trustee Sullivan if he would do it, and he said yes. And so, and Trustee Abernathy expressed a desire to be the alternate, or at least to be involved, and she said yes.
Okay, I'm not questioning, I'm just saying, if we're going to be transparent, we should do it for everything, so...
Well, it will be Trustee Kim's job to develop many wonderful ideas, and it'll be my job to ask her what they cost.
There you go.
There you go. Okay.
That's why he was changed.
There you go.
To be honest, this will be transparent.
Love it.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to mention this, last week, last week, I did a tour of the seminary. Father Byma over there had me over, and I went around with him for about an hour and a half. And I, I knew it was there, but they have a fantastic corporate retreat facility. I think we sometimes forget that they have that there, but there are corporations coming in from all over to meet there, and they can, I just want to get it out there because they're open for business in this area, is that it's a great place for a corporation, whether you have a small group of 10 or as many as 100 or more, you can go there, and they have overnight facilities, they have a great cafeteria, great meeting rooms, the full-blown audiovisual stuff, so that you can go and, with your company, if you need to get away. It's just a fantastic facility. So, I just wanted to express that and make sure that if you guys run into folks that are looking for that kind of thing, maybe pass the word along. It's right here, right in Mundeline. It's just a fantastic place. I just wanted to, to mention that. Okay. Moving on to the trustee reports, we have the Public Works Committee, Trustee Meyer.
Right, and I was actually going to say something at the end of yours, so I'll just tack it on to now, since I'm first. Now, I, it's very difficult to get volunteers, and we've just gone through a bunch of people that have stepped up to the plate, who are willing to take time away from their family to volunteer and contribute to Mundeline. And I just wanted to express our appreciation for all their different diversity and diverse ideas and willingness to assist us and step up to the plate and volunteer. Yep. All right. So, for Public Works Committee, I have two motions tonight. The first one would be a motion to adopt a resolution to accept a proposal from Curry Motors of Frankfurt, Illinois, and approve the purchase order for a pickup truck in the amount of $33,537.33. And that would be in Exhibit PW-1.
Second the motion. Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the second motion tonight is a motion to adopt a resolution to accept a proposal from Curry Motors of Frankfurt, Illinois, and approve the purchase order for a one-ton dump truck in the amount of $76,895.83. And that would be Exhibit PW-2.
Second. Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I don't have anything else, and, okay, and Adam doesn't either, so that would be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer. Next is the Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have two motions. The first is a motion to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T, a total, invoices totaling $18,624.26, and I will make that motion.
Second. Motion by Sullivan, second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Second motion is in regard to first-quarter financial report. As you can see, this report compares six different years for this period, this three-month period. And if anyone has any questions on this financial report, we could consider them at this time. We have a motion to approve this, or to accept this fiscal year-ending 2014 first-quarter financial report, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Meyer. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
This evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have one to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $1,473,781.95. Some of the major amounts to be paid, an amount to Weston Solutions for design-build contract for the new village hall and Weston Building. This amount, $140,161.67. We approved the sewer televising truck, and the bill is here, that in the amount of And that is the major, oh, there is another one. SB Mundeline LLC. This is the payment for the sales tax rebate, economic incentive for Mundeline crossings. This particular payment, principal and interest, is for $264,738.67. Anyone has any questions regarding to finance? We can consider them. There are none. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Sullivan. Next, we have the Public Safety Committee, Trustee Semple.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is a, an approval of the minutes from our July 22, 2013, meeting. Madam Clerk, is this just for the Public Safety Committee members to vote on?
Yes, just the three.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from July 22. This is for the committee members.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Abernathy. Any discussion?
Just that I'm going to abstain because I missed that meeting.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Second item, not on the agenda, but related to the Public Safety Committee, specifically the Fire Department. We had a meeting call for August twenty-sixth, and based upon the request of the mayor, we've agreed to move this meeting to September ninth, correct Deputy Chief? And this is to go over the ISO rating. I believe everybody's seen the rating, but this is the opportunity for the chiefs to go over the details of the scores, and where we're lacking, where we're strong, et cetera, et cetera. So again, that'll be September ninth at six o'clock PM, prior to the Village Board meeting that evening. The second motion is going to be to authorize the Fire Department to solicit bids for a new NFPA nineteen-oh-one compliant fire engine slash pumper, as Exhibit PS dash, dash two. And after we have a motion and a second, I'd like to have Deputy Chief just briefly go through the process of developing the bids, and, you know, very briefly, just informing the board what we're getting into. And again, this is just to go out to bid, we're not buying a fire truck tonight, we're not writing any checks out, but this just does start that process, assuming the bids come in, in the area that were, are acceptable to us. So I make the motion.
Motion by Simple.
Second.
Second by Meyer, any discussion? Well, now we wanna...
Yes, with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Deputy Chief.
Thank you, trustee. Generally, our mode of operation is to bring before you a request to purchase, as with ambulances, cars, SUVs. The problem we ran into with the Northwest Municipal Suburban Cooperative Purchasing Agreement was the pumpers were outside of the budgeted number we had put in. A light-duty pumper came in at about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and a heavy-duty pumper came in at five hundred and twenty thousand, obviously both with outside of our arrangements. Both contracts were with Pierce Manufacturing out of Appleton, Wisconsin. We were able to talk with them, and came up with the idea that even bare bones on those vehicles, we still couldn't afford them. The other side of the contract was, the contract was coming due. It was gonna be up July first, two thousand thirteen, so we decided to hold and wait and see what the new contract came out to be. Pierce was awarded that contract for a heavy-duty pumper only, it came in at five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars at that point, again, well beyond the budgeted number we had, so we had to scale back. Pierce put together some figures, and we decided to go out to bid to get the best buy, get the best bang for our dollar, basically.
And Deputy Chief, in terms of all the quote-unquote "options" on fire trucks, you guys basically spec this thing from the ground up, and it's more or less built for us, based upon our specific requirements, correct?
Sir, correctly. Additionally, what we did is we've called in the village mechanics, because after the warranty's up, they're the ones gonna be working on it, so they've had weigh-in on everything from tires, to axles, to transmissions, to springs, to motors, to make sure that this is a custom vehicle from the tires up. Not quite as in-depth as a tower ladder, or a truck company would be, but it is a very in-depth vehicle, built specifically for Mundaline. We've had probably five distributors, or five manufacturers here. Monday morning, there was a pumper that's going out to LA County Fire Department that was here. This morning, there was another pumper going to Webster, Massachusetts, that was here. Friday morning, there's gonna be just a demo of another manufacturer here, so you wanna come by between nine-thirty and ten o'clock, to see what we're looking at, give you an idea. There's just a lot of thought and concepts and meetings that go into these things.
Now, when Chief mentions the options, I know this is a first fire truck for a few of the elected officials here, when he talks about the options, there are communities out there that will get such things as brass-plated bells, because they look prettier in parades, and you're not gonna see any fancy bells on our fire trucks like that.
I'm not a big advocate of that, I'm an advocate of gonna last twenty years in heavy duty. In discussions with our mechanics, they were on board with what I wanted to do. This is gonna be a stainless steel vehicle from bumper to bumper. There's a lot of manufacturers out there that'll try and sell an aluminum cab, and then match it up with a steel back, or vice versa. The problem is, when you start cutting into that aluminum, you start to get oxidation, you get a rust problem. So we're being, we're building this thing very heavy duty, from frame rails, to axles, to body components of stainless steel only.
And how long will this theoretically last us?
I'm hoping twenty years plus.
Fantastic. Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a question, I'm sorry for not knowing this, what is, you said that what it came in as was five hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what is our budgeted?
Four hundred, four hundred and twenty thousand.
Four twenty, so it came in about a hundred, almost a hundred thou?
It, yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, we're, this vehicle's being built, like trustee said, specifically for Mundaline, it will have a lot of things you wouldn't see on your average pumper that a suburban community might have. Lower hose beds, so firefighters don't have to jump off the hose bed with hose, they can really pull it from the ground and go. It, it's really, it's gonna be a bulletproof engine, hopefully, the way we want it built. With the mechanics weigh-in, I'm a lot more comfortable in motors and things of that nature, so... There's really been a lot of thought, probably close to a dozen meetings that have run into this. Plus, two conferences, we went to Indianapolis to look at fire apparatus, and there's a conference coming up Friday and Saturday at McCormick Place, where we're gonna go down and just reassure ourselves that this is the style of vehicle we want to get. Not so much manufacturers, more the style of vehicle we want to get.
So this is to replace forty-three eleven, how old is engine forty-three eleven?
Twenty years plus, ma'am. Plus, it's been through two bodywork rehabilitations since I've been here, it got backed in, it's had a rust corrosion issue, excuse me, to where the back floor panels have been replaced, and then it got backed into by a, a bobcat removing snow from the driveway.
So, in this, you say that you have a commitment to sell it to College of Lake County?
No, no, ma'am, we have a commitment to sell it to a brokering firm for fifteen thousand dollars right now.
Okay.
There's, there's three proposals, there's a, a brokering firm who will take it, list it on their website, and put it on their lot at a price of, I believe he said eighteen to twenty thousand, and not take less than fifteen. There's another gentleman that will take it, rehab it, he is guaranteed fifteen thousand unless we're gonna take, remove the Honda generator that's on it. And then Chief was in discussions with Chief, retired Chief Justice, about donations slash money to take the pumper off our hands, so the college could use it. The one, the one concern I have with the college using it, is one of the firms we talked to saw blistering, for sake of a better term, on the tank, so if the tank would rupture, fail, there's different ways you can hook a fire pump up to make it work, whether it be on a hydrant, but if the tank fails, it's really a non-fixable item at that point. The, both brokerage firms said, just so you know, this is, could possibly happen, potentially.
So, in this, says they, we could give it to him, whoever the him is, ninety days out from delivery of our replacement vehicle. So if we could do away with this engine for ninety days prior to getting a new vehicle? If we can do without it for ninety days, I don't know, it, I'm just wondering why we need to spend four hundred-plus thousand dollars on a replacement, if we can do without it?
We need a reserve vehicle each station, both for ISO and for malfunction purposes, and what a new engine would be, would be an engine out of this firehouse. If we didn't have a backup engine, then we gotta put a heavier load call volume on the truck company. So, that big ladder truck that sits out on the floor, that's a significant draw to chase ambulance calls, and run the everyday average calls with it. It has its purpose in our operation, in that if we had a fire, it can all square, get people down off the upper floors, things of that nature. It's just that three-eleven is just getting to the end of its life cycle, and it's being, it's literally being torn apart, it's been...
Okay, so if what we're looking for is to have a backup engine, what about just buying a used engine that we can keep as a backup, that's in better shape?
Well, the problem we get into is what we get into when we're giving three-eleven away. Is it somebody else's problem, is it had issues before with the pump, we just don't know the history on it. It's just a more solid vehicle, to buy a vehicle that meets our standards now, because of the amount of equipment we're running around with, generator sizes, tank sizes, ladder sizes. It's a better idea to purchase what you need now, that's gonna last you for twenty years, as opposed to buying a used vehicle, that you're gonna try and get your equipment into, and meet your purposes and operations with the fire department.
Okay, thank you.
I hear what you're saying.
Lot of money.
This is just a lot of money, this is just to get the bids.
See what they're like, and then we can decide.
We can think about that. I hear what you're saying, okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Deputy Chief, anything else for fire?
Oh, sir.
Okay, with that, next is police, Deputy Chief Monahan, anything for PD?
Few items, Chief Gunther wanted me to remind everyone of, this week, the schools start here in Mundaline District Seventy-Five, and the high schools start on Wednesday. We will be out conducting high-visibility patrols around those schools, and lastly, on, or next Thursday, August twenty-second, the PD will be having cake and coffee for, or celebrating Officer Eric Butt's retirement. He'd be retiring after twenty years of service to the Village Mundaline. Thank you.
How did National Night Go, Night Out go? I was in Seattle on last Tuesday night, and I was just amazed at how popular of an event it is in a major city, in a completely different area than we are, with, did ours go well?
It was excellent, we had about two hundred attendees, and the big hit was Chief Gunther in the, in the pool, which was often. So, he, he raised about two hundred dollars for Special Olympics for that as well.
Fantastic, thank you. Anybody else, any questions for the chiefs? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, except, can I just add, Trustee Simple, that we talked about next year, that we're gonna have a pie eating contest?
Sorry.
For the Village Board as a fundraiser at the National Night Out.
Should have a pie throwing contest.
That would work too, if you wanna volunteer for that.
That would cost more money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Trustee Voss, Community and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the first thing on tonight's agenda is, sorry, a motion to pass an ordinance approving the Village of Mundaline Sewer Backup Prevention Program, is seen as Exhibit CED one. If you remember, this is something that we talked about at budget time, to, that residents can apply for reimbursement of fifty percent of a project, to prevent flooding in their homes, backflow problems. And so in your packet, there's information talking about what is required, there's a maximum of four thousand per household, and what the sewer backup program entails, and who's eligible, and how they, how residents can be reimbursed. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Meyer, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the next thing is clowning around special use permanent variations, as seen in, as Exhibit CED two. The first is a motion to accept the planning, I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commissioner's Minutes and Findings of Fact.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Meyer, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, and I'm sort of remiss in not saying this before, the petitioners are here, do you wanna come forward, are there any questions that anybody has? Okay, so do you wanna step up to the microphone and? You just need to state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Mitch Dicker, twenty-three, eighteen, Birchwood Court North, Buffalo...
Could you spell your last name?
Sure, D.I.C.K.E.R., two-three-one-eight, Birchwood Court North, Buffalo Grove, six-zero-zero-eight-nine.
Thank you.
Okay, and then just if anybody has any questions, so that they know that you're there. Okay, the next thing is a motion, I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commissioner's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Trustee Kim, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, sorry. C, motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a special use permit to Section two-zero-point-four-zero-point-zero-two-zero of the Mundaline Municipal Code, to allow outdoor storage at an existing heavy retail slash rental establishment for clowning around entertainment at two-twenty South Shadow Avenue, subject to conditions. And I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Meyer, any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Abernathy.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Yes, I was looking, these, so the inflatables won't be stored the way some of these pictures are depicting?
Correct, some of those pictures that, in the packet, go back to two thousand and eleven, I believe, so what that, that was, is we were blowing them up outside, and now we blow them up in a certain area, but none of the inflatables are stored outside now, or ever, those inflatables are just up temporarily.
Okay, so when I thought of storage, I was thinking like pods, so it's not gonna be pods?
Correct, it's not gonna be pods. Basically, the storage is gonna be amusement rides, so like in one of the pictures, there's like an orbitron, or a climbing wall, or a little kitty Ferris wheel.
Uh-huh.
And it's, it's a hard, it's what's called a hard ride, and what, they're trailer-mounted hard rides, they're, it's mounted to a trailer, so a vehicle pulls up, attaches to it, and pulls it away. Those trailer rides are gonna be allowed to be left outside, in parking spaces, in the parking lot.
So what about the ability for kids to go around them at night, when you're not open?
Right, that's a good question. We've had those, these rides outside, since we've been in Mundaline, which I think is approximately twelve, thirteen years, and the rides are closed, they're not open, they're not plugged in, they're, they don't operate, and we've never, ever had an issue, we have cameras around our whole building, we've never seen kids on, or around, or near them at all, and we've never had a problem.
So, and the other thing is, just to clarify, so those inflatables can be blown up during the day, and dried out, and then they have to be taken down, and stored inside the building at night?
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're on C.
Do we wanna call that vote, yeah?
Yeah, please, uh, yeah, Clerk, please call the, the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion D is a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a variation to Section twenty-point-five-six-point-zero-nine-zero, parentheses, H, of the Mundaline Municipal Code, to allow for the use of parking areas for outdoor storage for clowning around entertainment at two-twenty South Shadow Avenue, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Meyer, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Lastly, we have a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a variation to Section twenty-point-six-zero-point-one-four-zero-C-one of the Mundaline Municipal Code, to waive the requirement for screening of outside storage areas for clowning around entertainment at two-twenty South Shadow Avenue, and I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Meyer, discussion?
The, the only other thing is, I wanted to mention that there were initially some property owners who had some objections, but they have all been resolved prior to the Plan Commission meeting, I believe.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to number three, yeah, go ahead.
Moving on to, thank you, Steve. To number three, Orchard Meadows, formerly Quigs Orchard, on the east side of Route sixty-eighty-three, we have a staff report, and there is someone here. Are you guys doing a presentation for us? Okay, do you wanna step on up and state your names?
It's John Escher...
It's John Isherwood, Cave Nannian Homes.
Could you spell the last name, please? Thank you.
1804 North Napier Boulevard. Naperville, Illinois. 60563.
And I'm Brian Murphy with Cave Nannian Homes, at the same address.
Brian Murphy spelled just like it sounds?
Yeah, same Irish way.
Thank you.
First, Mr. Mayor, trustees, village staff, thank you for your time this evening to allow us to present to you a concept plan that we have for a property here in town that we recently purchased called Orchard Meadows with old Quigs Orchard. The property was previously approved in 2005, and we'd just like to revisit the, the site plan and the proposed product. Just a little bit about Cave Nannian. We're a public company, sixth largest in the nation, but you guys all probably know us better here as Town and Country Homes. We completed Long Meadow Estates just north of here. We recently just finished Tall Grass Ridge, which was a broken community that we came into, and recently completed that. Locally, we've been very active on the acquisition front. Over the past three years, we've acquired 11 new communities across the Chicagoland area, which has resulted in impressive growth for us. 50% in 12, based on deliveries, and, and 25% this year. This map here just gives you a flavor of, of where we're doing business in the Chicagoland area. You can see where, you know, as far north is, is Mundaline and Wakanda, and as far south is Bolingbrook. So a little bit more about the, the property in question. The property in question is the old Quigs Orchard. It is approximately 20 acres, and it is outlined in, in yellow on the left there. It is just west of Midlothian Road, and it is, actually has a right-of-way access, access on Route 6083. The preliminary plan, which I'll get to on the next slide, was a clustered-type site development that included 70 maintenance-free units. Generally, the concept was to put them on cul-de-sacs, small lots, 48, 100 square foot minimum, and increase or offer a maintenance-free lifestyle. This here is the, the site plan. You can see the, there's a main spine road running down the middle of the property, and, and small cul-de-sacs off of each of those. I think it's important to note, the original plan, which we're not in favor of building, even though that is what is preliminary plot approved, doesn't have sidewalk on the cul-de-sacs, only along the main spine road. And in general, we just don't feel that a maintenance-free community and product offering will really fit the demands of the market today. So real quickly, clicking on to, to what our proposed site plan looks like for the Orchard Meadows community. We're advocating a, kind of a more typical suburban community layout. Here you see curvilinear streets moving north and south through the property. In total, there are 71 single-family home lots on this site. That is, one more than was previously approved, which is the 70 units. Some of our lot standards, generally, they're gonna be a 52-foot wide lot, and, and minimum 120-foot deep. So that works out to about 6,200 square foot minimum. Standard setbacks, we are, would look for a 25-foot front and 25-foot rear yard setback to accommodate the, the housing types we would plan to build here.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The, uh, homes that you built, Tall Grass Ridge, those lots are closer to 8,000 square feet?
They are, yes. They were.
Same-size home, though, right? 30, 22 to 30?
Generally, the same-size home, yes. 22 to.
So you're looking at building the same-size home on 2,000 square foot less let?
Um, the, the proposed home sizes here are actually smaller than those that were originally proposed here and approved back in 2005.
That wasn't my question.
Yes, I mean, we, I think in general, our anticipated home size would be very similar to that at Tall Grass Ridge.
On 2,000 square foot less, smaller lots?
That's correct, yes. We find that in today's marketplace, not everyone is, is after a very large yard that they need to maintain. Currently, we're marketing lot sizes of this type with these homes in both the Naperville area, as well as the Winfield area, and they have done very well, and have proved to be very popular to the market. And it all offers us, you know, the ability to bring, you know, competitively priced homes to the market that a lot of people can afford.
And if I can add, in Tall Grass Ridge, the home sites were 80 feet wide and 100 feet deep. So these actually create a larger backyard for, for, you know, the, the prospective buyer, but the width is narrower. So, you know, with the differences between the home site sizes between here and Tall Grass, instead of getting a wider and shallower, you're getting a narrower and deeper, which a lot of our consumers, you know, find they get a nice backyard versus having, you know, wider side yards with the, the homes being very similar in width.
They'll be more on top of their neighbors, then?
They'll be closer to each other, yes.
On the sides, correct.
But the, the setbacks in comparison to what was approved in preliminary plot here, in comparison, the side yard setbacks were five foot, the front yard setbacks were five foot, and the rear yard setbacks were 15 foot. So you're talking about a, a very dense and very close-together community that was obviously platted with a maintenance-free style. We think this is a better solution that'll kinda meet market demands a little bit more closely.
Well, there were additional green space that was supposed to be communal, so that the yards were smaller because it allowed for communal green space.
So here is the site plan. The northern kind of white space, if you will, is, is largely all kind of a detention area that's used as a stormwater facility, and, and then the only kind of other open area that you see i- is clustered toward the southeast portion of the site. You're, you're correct in that the lots themselves do not touch each other. There's a small outlot between all of the backyards. But if you look at the proximity of the, the houses here, they're actually much closer together than, than what they would be in our proposed site plan. Both side to side is about equivalent, but rear to rear is significantly a larger distance. And the main reason for that is, you can just see the amount of roadway here, and cul-de-sacs is a significantly higher percentage of the site plan than if you look here. The roadway that we'll be installing is significantly less. Therefore, allows us, allows us to dedicate more of the site to the number of lots, or spread that, that area across all the lots for this community. Offering a larger lot, you know, the minimum is 120, th- they get up to 170 deep with the, the curvilinear nature of, of the site plan.
How many do you have that are 170 deep?
I would estimate, you know, between one, probably 10. And, and in general, what we did was, on the east line and the, the west line, we made those lots deeper because those are the lots that abut existing neighborhoods. And so it provides for a, a larger distance between the back of these new homes and the backs of the existing homes.
The front green that is not touched by your proposal?
Uh, this is a, a two-acre parcel. It's a commercial outlot. We do not own that. We purchased this parcel at a foreclosure auction, and are now looking to obviously develop it. And, and we just wanna do what's, what's best for the site, and, and that's why we're here to talk to you tonight. It's very early on in the, the planning stages, and so we're looking from, input from the board, on their wishes, their desires, their thoughts, on the site plan, on the product we plan to offer. We've been working with Victor, you know, to kind of vet this site concept, and he thought it'd be a great opportunity to get, uh, community input very early on in the planning stages.
And the houses are very similar to the ones at Tall Grass Ridge, are they not? The, uh, I'm sorry, the, I'm trying to look for the model, sorry. There's.
So, I, I can go through, or Brian can go through a few of the, um, the home types that we plan to build here.
So we have seven different plans that we're offering that range from 2,200 to 3,400 square feet. They're similar to Tall Grass, but they're better because all of them include a covered porch or patio on every elevation. So there's seven homes, and each home has three different facades that can go on the front of that home. So that offers a nice palette of elevations that we can offer to, to the potential residents. All of them have either a porch, portico with some columns, some different roof details, eve details, and different features on the front that help accentuate the, the front elevation and de-emphasize the garage a little bit. The, uh, we're also, um, what we did in Tall Grass was we, to improve some of the exteriors, we offered an architectural shingle, which we are proposing to include here as well.
Standard or option?
Standard. What we didn't do in Tall Grass that we wanted to include on every home to help improve, you know, some of the feedback that we received is wrapping all of the windows on all four-sided elevations and creating quarterboards there, which just creates a, a little bit more detailing on the sides and the rear of the homes, so that, you know, we, you don't end up with, you know, just a lot of siding and windows on the sides and rear. These homes are currently being offered in two of our newest communities in Lisle and in Winfield. We've had some great feedback, some great sales there. These homes also offer a lot more exterior details to break up the sides and rears because we're offering morning rooms, some different side bays and bumpouts along the rear, family room extensions, bonus rooms, things that, of that nature, that really break up the, the different facades on the sides and rears. And you can see some of the different offerings on this particular plan. This is a model that we have in Winfield. And just look at the photos. So that's the model that was just recently built of, of the Colfax Home. On the front?
No, on the back.
They do.
Oh, I thought you said they all had a patio or something that's not.
On the front, they all have a porch or a portico. So then you can see the windows that are wrapped on the front, and then if you can look in the bottom right corner, you can see the corners are wrapped, the windows are all wrapped. This has a morning room bump out across the back of the home, and also has a side, a fireplace on the side that bumps out as well to create some different four-sided architecture for the community as well.
What do you anticipate price points?
I think the price point range is gonna be all in between 325 and 400,000.
Just for a point of reference, on average, the Tall Grass Ridge community averaged about 310,000 all-in on, on pricing. We're kinda trying to, to step it up a level here. You know, one other thing that Brian didn't mention is that, you know, in this one, you can see, maybe not very well on the screen, it's a little bit dark, but, you know, all the plans, or all of our, our homes will offer both masonry and stone elevations to, to the consumer. It, it's not standard, but it's going to be something they're going to pick from, on, on the sales floor.
That's okay, go ahead.
It had a preliminary putt.
Well, they, they, there's gonna be a re-subdivision, and so there'd be a trip, uh, there may be a public hearing required before the Plan Commission, or at least a trip to the Plan Commission. If there are certain variances that may need to be asked for. But then there would also be an amendment. We've gone through this. We're starting to get pretty good at it, because we've gone through this a few times. Where we either decide that there's so many changes that we just restate an agreement because it's just too difficult to change it, or we could do as simple as amending, making certain amendments to a development agreement. So I don't know if we're far enough along in that process yet to make those decisions, but that would kinda be the process that we followed with. Hickory Woods is one that comes to mind. Tall Grass Ridge, we did the same thing. So, starting to be a platter. All, all those will be, yeah, they'll be updated. Agreements that are in place, or were in place with the school and the library district, those will all be revisited. Same thing we do on all the other.
Realistically, I think next summer would be kind of a target timeframe. Uh, we, we imagine a, a sales program that'll take about two years, give or take, and a build-out that'll be, you know, six to eight months past that. So all-in, less than 36 months.
Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you. Well, welcome to Mundaline. Appreciate your interest in this.
Well, thank you.
At the time that the Polcon agreement was being set in place, there was interest in the 78 acres at the northeast corner here that fronts on Midlothian. And in doing and working through both agreements, I, it was agreed that Midlothian Road, Cortlandt Street would pass over Midlothian Road, go west, enter the Polcon, your, now your development, and then connect to Route 6083. And your plan shows that road. The question, I, I have one of them, is if you tried to in any way acquire that seven acres on Midlothian Road in order to make this part of your development?
The property for sale on, on Midlothian Road at this point, is that a, a price point that just doesn't allow us to, to acquire it and include it in our development?
Crazy number, yeah, I, I realize that.
As, as far as the road that you're discussing, in discussions with Victor's, my understanding, the village has actually acquired the right-of-way necessary to get to the, the property we own. And we would include and plan to take that extension of Cortland from Midlothian to our site as part of our development plan. We'd undertake that public infrastructure work. It's outlined in, in yellow up here, just so you guys can get a flavor of exactly where that right-of-way is. And it would create a four-way intersection at Midlothian and Cortland. And we think it's just a fantastic entrance into our community, you know, coming just right by the lake there in the park. It's a beautiful park, and we think that'll just be a great entrance into our, into Orchard Meadows.
Well, it would, but that's in the future.
No, this would be done with our development proposal.
Yeah.
How are we gonna get half of that right-of-way from?
We, we already secured it. At the time that those development agreements were put together, we, I don't know, brokered a deal between the park district and then owner, and we have the actual right-of-way for that road.
But we have that already?
Yeah.
Wonderful, okay. Then, then this is not a future concern. The Polcon plan showed some intersections on the one north to south street coming through. You are showing a straight run from the north to the south. And as you realize, there are times when Midlothian Road is pretty congested going southbound. And this is going to be somewhat of a logical cut-through. Have you thought, number one, of any type of traffic calming or other? Or other suggestions to, uh, slow traffic down that is cutting through? And I'm sure you haven't engineered the intersection with Route 6083. But would it appear in this rough drawing that there's just one lane, right, left, out? Perhaps it would be, uh, and maybe the state will dictate what that looks like?
Sure. Um, I mean, to be perfectly honest, we haven't gotten into that level of detail.
No, all right.
I think that was kind of traffic calming measures or something we'd absolutely incorporate into our development because we absolutely would want to discourage cut-through traffic. Uh, it's not something we'd want and it's not something our residents would want.
Well, you're going, you're going to have it, that's inevitable. The other, the other question is regarding the two acres that you haven't acquired. Never going to be cheaper than it is right now.
I've, uh.
Especially once you build out.
I've, uh, I've spoken to ownership on that parcel as well. Bless you. Uh, I've spoken to that part, uh, that ownership on that parcel as well. It's something I'm still in active discussions on. To this point, we have not come to terms on any type of agreement, um, you know.
I think that in regard to that two acres, we would want, the state may well require that the Route 6083 driveways be vacated in order to have the access on Cortland Street. That is to pull into your development in order to access that two acres.
And if.
How would, how would that, how would that work?
Are you proposing that we would completely vac, or, uh, eliminate any kind of access point to 6083?
Well.
Not you.
Future, not you unless you, unless you owned it, the two acres. But whoever wants to redevelop that.
Sure.
And now has roadway on its west boundary. The state is going to look at that and say, okay, I want you to vacate. So, how would this work? Is it two different owners, one for the two-acre commercial and, and your company with the new Cortland Street?
I, I'm sure we could find a solution working with that ownership group. Uh, they've been, uh, very responsive to, to calls and inquiries we've made with them. Uh, Jeff Ohm, I believe, is, is the owner of that property.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, you know, he said he's open to a sale, but he's also excited at the prospect of, um, having our site to develop, which may make, um, his site more attractive to, um, that, you know, bring a tenant in, which they already have a full restaurant facility there.
Jeff Ohm's father may be a real owner, I'm not sure. Jeff Ohm is, Jeff Ohm is a broker at this point, I think.
No, I, I understand.
All right. The retention, is that to, um, flow into the large, um, park district-owned wet retention area to the north? Has that been engineered in that direction?
I forget, I, I forget exactly the, the topography of the site, um, and which way it flows. Uh, I, I believe that would probably be the logical outflow, but.
I'm pretty familiar with that area. There's, this is, this is a low area basin, a natural basin.
Yes.
And there is some stormwater, in-ground stormwater flowage into the park district's lake pond there. I would imagine if somebody has, I mean, maybe not done preliminary engineering, but is thinking about the topography.
The, yes, the, the detention basin was located specifically where it was because it is the logical low spot, um, on the site. Um, as far as outflow and things of that nature, you know, all, uh, Lake County stormwater ordinance requirements would, uh, make it so that our out, our outflow after the development would be lower than the, the current outflow. Uh, we need to take all the water on our site, store it on our site, and release it at a rate that is less than what currently exists today. Um, so we would comply with all those, uh, all the county stormwater ordinances, which are very strict. As to the exact engineering of it all, again, you know, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet.
Okay, well, I think this is a good concept and, um, I do have the concern about this north-south movement of traffic, cut-through traffic.
And, and just so I'm clear, it's, it's coming on Cortland down to get to 6083?
It's coming, it's coming down Midlothian.
Correct.
From north to south, um, realizing that they're going to have two or three cycles of wait time at 6083 and Midlothian and making a right down your new street and racing down north to south in order to make a right-hand turn onto 6083.
I think there'll be decent amount of people heading north on 6083 cutting through.
Well, yeah, other, yeah, morning and night.
Yeah, go in the other direction.
North in the morning and south perhaps in the, in the evening. But this, these are long stretches that are designed.
I'm just kind of confused, would not the, a lot of the southbound traffic on Midlothian be originating at the high school or the school systems? And if they wanted to head west on 6083, wouldn't Holly be a more logical route?
Sure, yeah.
So, I guess.
But there's a lot of them that aren't, that they would have cut through from 45 and their work in their way like this.
Okay.
And they cut through.
Well, it's, perhaps it's not going to be that serious problem.
We're open to working with, um, obviously village staff to, to figure out a solution to, to address that. Um, if it's eliminating, uh, the access point on 6083, that's something we're absolutely open to now that the, uh, Midlothian access, um, i- is available. It originally was not available when Procon took this property through, that is why they had the one access point on 6083. We thought it was a logical connection point. You know, your, your comprehensive plan encouraged connectivity, both pedestrian and, uh, traffic. Uh, and that's why we included it.
And we, we like that, I think it's just would need a stop sign somewhere or some.
Sure.
I know that the police chief always said stop signs aren't effective, so something else that would be calming for.
Yeah, we'd be happy to work with the police chief to address any concerns he would have related to cut-through traffic and, you know, what we can do to discourage that.
And again, I think the proposed site plan does offer a couple of extra turns that the previous approved plan was more of a straight run, um, to get there that would hopefully slow it down slightly.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, anyone else want to give some input?
I'm just excited something's going to be built there, that's all.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, so I was on the original negotiating team. Are we going to have to have a negotiating team again to talk about? Uh, let me just say that I'm happy to, to do it, but I would need a partner because the other trustee is no longer on the board.
I think we probably would, right?
Yeah, I, I would think so.
Okay.
So.
Big enough that we'll need to bounce something off.
Okay, so again, we're going to need another half because.
Okay.
The other half is there, not there anymore. And then, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have to mention is Park on Park is Wednesday night.
Oh, I just want to give my input too, if anyone else had any. I, I like this layout a lot better than the previous one, I think it's an improvement. I would just, uh, second trustee Sullivan's concerns and I'm scratching my head thinking, how many people really do turn right there? Because you made a good point, to get over there from Holly would make a lot more sense. So, you may want to do traffic count, how many people really are making right turns at rush hour?
I think that more of the people will be coming through from Cortland that have come across 45 and they're going to take Cortland all the way over to get to 6083. That's going to be what you're going to have.
That would make sense.
Or the reverse.
And, and as part of our, as part of our application, we absolutely will, which is required, commission a full traffic report.
Right.
With this site plan, the impacts, the recommendations, et cetera. Um, it's in our normal course of business. Um, before we got started on that path, we just wanted to make sure that we had, you know, some, um, view at, at the board level of what their thoughts were for the site.
Yeah, I think, hope you got it.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, but you should know, this body does hear a bit about cut-through traffic in other parts of our community, so.
I understand that, it was a sensitivity.
About a little bit there, so.
One question.
Yes.
Hugnannian?
Hugnannian? It's an Arminian name.
Okay, thank you. Or town or country owns.
Yes.
All the, all the letters get pronounced.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Park on Park is Wednesday and then I have nothing more, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, so let me see here, where are we? Go back this way. Trustee Kim, Communications and Marketing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although there's officially nothing down on the paper, um, we can give a quick update on our search for the marketing manager. Phil Vado?
The update is, um, I think, uh, the mayor is speaking with our finalists this week. Hope to make a job offer right after that. Any luck at all have somebody onboard, uh, beginning of September?
There are a lot of talented individuals, we've whittled down and quite a lot of people have, uh, spoken to them and different departments as well. Um, can I also throw in a, uh, update on the branding campaign here as well? Is this the right place for it? Right now, available on the Facebook page that they've created called Mundeline Branding, uh, they have a survey which everyone in the community, anyone who deals with the community, you know, has come to a community event. They're, they're all welcome to take the survey. We have it in not only in English, but Spanish as well. And if you don't have Facebook, um, they can email it to you or you can email me and ask for it. It's hkim@mundeline.org. But right now, they're in the process of collecting the data, um, so they can figure out where to go from here. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Abernathy, you have a few items here. Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt a resolution expressing support for an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grant Application for Streetscape and Pedestrian Safety Improvements on Illinois Route 176, Maple Avenue.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and Part B is a motion to authorize the execution and submission of an Illinois Enhancement Program Grant Application for Aesthetic and Pedestrian Improvements to Illinois Route 176 between Midlothian and Lake Street.
Second to motion. Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, are they looking at the north or south side of the road?
The north side, I believe.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, we're going to have to, is it all in our right-of-way? Is it, are we going to have to?
Very conceptual right now, most likely we would need to go through some land acquisition.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion to adopt a resolution expressing support for a CMAP Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Application for the McKinley Avenue Metro Pedestrian Bridge.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Boss, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and a motion to authorize the execution and submission of a CMAP Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Application for the McKinley Avenue Metro Pedestrian Bridge.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Boss, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Next, we're going to, an Illinois, okay. Motion to adopt a resolution expressing support for an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grant Application for the Allenson Road Bike Path Improvements.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Meyer, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so.
Trustee Boss.
Trustee Semple sent us some really, uh.
On the south side of Allenson Road and the, the west end is Washington Boulevard and it will cross over to the east side of Butterfield Road and connect with the bike path, uh, on the east side of Butterfield Road.
And is it completely off the road, like a large wide sidewalk?
We're envisioning it being completely off the road.
So, not like Washington Boulevard where it's on the road? Okay.
Yeah, my email was just, uh, uh, I was in Portland, obviously, last week and, uh, realized from a native who's a colleague, uh, that bikers basically own the city. And to see, uh, the amount of traffic they have and the bike lanes that are incorporated as a lane in the roadway that shares the road with buses and cars and even electric, I don't want to, like trolley cars, electric trains that share the road, uh, it just seemed like there's areas where, that would be appropriate because some places we can't do like we're doing on Holly Street, like we're proposing here. I was not insinuating that we ought to include it at this board meeting, it just happened that I was in Portland and said, wow, this is pretty cool. Just wanted to let everybody know what I'd seen, just for future consideration as we're thinking about becoming more bike-friendly, which, you know, can't be too friendly these days, I don't think.
Okay.
Okay. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Authorize the execution and submission of an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grant Application for the Allenson Road Bike Path Improvements.
We have a motion from Abernathy? Second. Second by Semple, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Is that everybody? No. Meyer?
Motion carries. Trustee Abernathy, do you have anything else?
Oh, no, I don't, um, Mr. Boucher? No?
Very good, under other reports, I want to make sure that we do a Committee of the Whole call. I'd like to call a meeting of the Committee of the Whole for August 26th at 6:00 PM at this location, well, it'll be in the room over there, um, to continue our discussion on the sign ordinance and pick up where, where we left off earlier tonight. Okay, um, going on to the omnibus items, we have items A through K. Does any trustee wish to pull any of these items off and vote on them separately?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Meyer?
E.
B.
E, Edward.
Excuse me, E is in Edward, okay? Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item G, please.
G is in Gulf.
Is in Gulf, yes.
Trustee Sullivan, okay? Anyone else? Okay, could I have a motion, please, to pass the omnibus items, A through K, with the exception of E and G?
So moved.
Motion by Boss? Second by Abernathy, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Great, motion carries. Trustee Meyer, item E.
I pulled it off because I need to abstain.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion, please, to?
移動
Okay, to pass item E. Motion by Semple?
Second.
Second by Boss, any discussion?
I did a few questions.
On E, okay?
Yes, uh, considering what we had just gone through with Verizon earlier, um, so this is to take the privileges away from T-Mobile that they had applied for because it has expired. So, there's a very real chance then in the future sometime, T-Mobile would come back and reapply for this? Or pick a different, I mean, up to them.
Yeah, they could.
Could then Verizon also go, well, since they're not using it, I'll hop over there and, and start the process all over again from the beginning and?
Yeah, they could do that too. Excuse me. But we did ask them that question and they declined.
All right, no further questions.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Trustee Sullivan, G is in Gulf.
Mr. Mayor, item G is to authorize the purchase of some scuba tanks, fire department equipment. I wonder if the deputy chief could tell us. Fourteen tanks are on this purchase order. Are they replacing fourteen tanks and what's the volume of the tanks?
Yes, sir, we're replacing fourteen tanks that have exceeded their DOT specification of fifteen years' service life. They're forty-five-hundred PSI cylinders, thirty minutes of the smaller diameter cylinders.
So the ones we have now are smaller than, and these are going to be larger?
Same size.
Same size?
Same size, thirty-minute cylinder, sir.
Did you say forty-five PSI?
Forty-five-hundred PSI.
Hundred, yeah, well, thank you, okay.
Forty-five PSI, not too long.
Yeah, wouldn't be much oxygen. We need fourteen tanks?
Yes, sir, we have four, they're on a rotational basis. We replace, when they come due about every five years, we'll say, there's generally between ten and fifteen cylinders in there.
We use them, well, we use them for events, but probably more often for training?
Well, training, but the guys are in and out of them every day for calls as they're going to activate a fire alarm. They're on their backs probably two to three, maybe four times a day.
Oh, okay. Oh, I, I understand, these-
You're thinking underwater tanks.
I'm thinking of underwater.
Yeah, a little bit longer duration on those, yeah. Now, these are the actual air packs if they were.
All right, fine, I understand, we need fourteen tanks, thank you. Okay. Okay, very good, I give, I make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Semple, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Brings us to the village staff reports, village administrator, Mr. Libado.
I have no report tonight.
Okay, takes us to the village attorney, Mr. Marino.
I have no report.
Very good. Thank you. Village clerk.
I have no report.
Okay. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, very good, thank you.